Hey, what's up guys Dalton here with Parish News Network. I'm making a video and I'm dissecting all the different parts of what is wrong with this study that came out yesterday, you know, they came out publicly with what they found on the study. This is what? One of the things I was talking about, I knew it was on here. This is the video that you want to go watch, it's called tech difficulties, my apologies. Um, it was where I was in one live and it had a difficulty and I had to start another one. This was posted on October 5th was when it was livestreamed. Pay attention to the condition at Rye Preserve. And I have muted the audio because I'm just rambling and talking and all that good stuff, but. Um. And, and, and it will be glitchy because of my service in that area, it sucks, but you see, I'm gonna actually pause it right here. Uh, and go full screen. So, the surface of the water here, you see it's got all this like slime slurry. It's got all these leaves, you know, it's got all this debris on this, on the surface. Let's keep playing here, you know. It's not moving. You can see it, you know, it's pretty up, it's not really moving that much. Uh, and, and you know, that's kind of what I'm talking about, and I go over to the other side of the road and I show the same thing. Uh, that, that sort of thing, you know. That it, you know, it's not really moving that much, there's a bunch of this stuff on the, on the top. This and that, and then, let's see here. We're gonna go out to the river. So this is me walking up to the river here. This is me walking up to the river here. Um, you know, this is coming from the preserve. And this would be from the dam, this is when they were letting off all that water, uh, you know, pre, I think it was pre-storm. They were having another big dump. Now, pay attention to the water there, you know, you can see, you know, it's very, it's very turbulent. It's overflowing its banks, you know, I mean, the water's ripping. Now, the the, um, one that we just witnessed that was stagnant connects back off over here where my cursor is, you know, way off in the trees, farther upstream. Now, this, this is the example that we are talking about. When we say that, um, there's a, a tailwater or a backwater effect when the dam is releasing all this water and actually, I'm gonna, um, pull up Google. Earth. Okay, explore Google Earth. Pay no attention to that stuff. Um. Rye. Preserve. Okay. So. Let's, uh, let's look at satellite, let me dismiss this. I haven't logged in on, on this browser before, so. I'm gonna assume that's why that was like that. Okay. So you see, this is where I was at when I was showing the Manatee River and it was ripping like a current, you know, I mean, just like nothing like this. Section right here that you can see this landmass was underwater, you know, all that good stuff. Well, the section that I was focused on where the water was stagnant was right here. So it, it probably connects somewhere right in here. Um, let me see if I can zoom in here. Just to kind of show you. Okay, yeah, you know, you, you see it right here, this is called the Rye Branch. Uh, this is that bridge that I was standing on, you know, there's the, you can kind of see the pipe that I had videoed. And then, you know, that's where it was completely stagnant water, it was not moving, it was not flowing. There wasn't even an undercurrent because if you, if you could see an undercurrent, you know what I'm saying, the top would somewhat be moving. The water was just completely stagnant, like there was no flow. Uh, since, you know, is what, is what I'm trying to get at, and you see here, you know, it snakes through the trees and all that jazz, and then it, it does come up over here, but the thing was is that this part of the river was so high that this, this section over here, I forget that you can't see my hands point, um, was not, it didn't have enough push essentially, you know, to push water out of the way, it didn't have enough flow, enough current, whatever, you know, whatever the case is, whatever word you want to use to push into the Manatee. Because there was so much current at the time that I took that video. Okay? So, when we come over here, we see that the current's moving, so there's, there's obviously a pushback effect from big to small. That's what this video demonstrates. Guys, so we are going to break down this work session. Uh, I'm gonna pick apart each piece and then I'll clip stuff in as I go along, but uh, I'm gonna try and let it play in its entirety, I'm gonna try and let the dude, you know, say out his points and stuff like that. Listen, this is the thing that I want people to understand, that when, when they come to the board with something like this, okay, they've already presented it to staff. But when they present it to the board for the board to make a decision and this is their findings of what the board just, you know, allowed them to spend money on, this is factual. This is not, you know, what's inter- in, inferred, this is not, this is this engineer saying, you know, this is what I looked at, this is, you know, my parameters, this was my cutoffs, and this was the result. So we're, uh, we're gonna watch here.
Who's gonna kick this off? Alright, good afternoon everyone. Uh, so we have a couple of different presentations that are planned this afternoon, um, and we really do welcome a lot of constructive input from the board as well as the public. Uh, we will start with a presentation from Patrick Terra, who is sitting here from Intera. He is the independent consultant, uh, he'll, he'll tell you all a little bit about himself, as well as the study he has done. Uh, and then we will turn it over to Tom Gerstenberger, who is, uh, one of our members of Public Works to be supported by Chad Butzo and myself. Um, and that is going to be a more, I'd say a broad conversation about stormwater, some of the solutions that, um, are, are potential. Uh, and we would be looking for, uh, board input as to where, where would you like us to go, because there are different possibilities of how we can address stormwater. Uh, none of them cheap, none of them easy, um, but we, we really need to make sure that, uh, it is within the guidelines of the board. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Patrick.
Thank you, like I, uh, was mentioned, my name's Patrick Terra, uh, with Intera Incorporated. And, uh, my talk here is to explain my, uh, investigation on flooding on the Manatee River, Hurricane Debbie. The outline of my presentation, uh, obviously an introduction of myself, uh, the hurricane, uh, some, some information on the hurricane itself. The basin, the watershed that, that, uh, was impacted. Some of my data analysis, uh, the weight of evidence, it's not just one analysis, it's multiple, uh, trains of thought as far as investigating uh, the, the reason for flooding. And then I'll get into the watershed management plans, which involves, uh, some of the models that have been developed by the district. About myself, um, like I said, my name's, uh, Patrick Terra, I'm a professional engineer from the state, in, in the state of Florida. I've got thirty-six years of experience, uh, thirty of them as a professional engineer. And, uh, born and raised in Florida, so I know the waterways, I've been on the, uh, many of these rivers, uh, canoeing and, and boating. Uh, I have experience, uh, serving as an expert witness for my, uh, legal actions. Uh, I was involved on the, uh, Florida Georgia lawsuit on the ACF, uh, as well as some MFL legal action. Um, I also serve as a peer review for the districts, looking at their MFL models, all about hydrology and hydraulics. So I have lots of experience. Uh, my areas of experience is, is everything about water, uh, hydrology, hydraulics, stormwater, storm surge, um, reservoir modeling. All of which are kind of components on this system. So Hurricane Debbie, um, if you lived in the state of Florida for longer than a year, you've, you've all experienced a hurricane and, and have seen maps, uh, you know, on the Weather Channel and have watched intently on those maps because, you know, your, your house is at risk. But, uh, Hurricane Debbie, as all hurricanes, it brings two things, rainfall and wind. In this, uh, slide here, I show.
Okay, so I actually, uh, I, I wanna point this out, um, you'll have to, you'll have to bear with me here because I, I can't, you know, show myself and show the screen at the same time, I'm sorry. I'm kind of doing this a little different because I don't feel like paying twenty bucks a month. Uh, anyway, besides this point, okay, so this graph right here, this graph, um, it actually looks like it came from USGS, it's in their pretty standard format. And I wanna, I wanna show a couple of different things, so this map, or, uh, this graph is really well, um, explained in the fact that, okay, they've got surge over here, it's in feet, all the way up to twenty-five. They've got rainfall over here in inches. And then they've got, you know, all of their dates and all that good stuff, um, and, you know, the peaks and all that, and then down here at the bottom, you know, it shows what each line is representing. Um, the reason why I bring that up is because some of his later things where he's talking about models and stuff like that, you really have to pay attention to what he's talking about. Because if not, it's not labeled on the graph, so you don't know what, you know, these half or point two increments really mean, um, if you're not paying attention. The other thing too, um, this is the track of something I want to point out is, yes, it did become a hurricane. While it was over us, it was a tropical storm as it went through our area. Um, the, the reason why that's important is because it was not a super significant event leading up to this, and, and that, that's one thing I want to point out, that, you know, they're not taking into account, it seems like further on, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna let him explain more, but, you know, this was a storm that the county discounted because they said, oh, it's only gonna bring eight to ten inches of rain, well, eight to ten turned into eighteen, and then they said it was twenty-one, you know, it, things ramped up quite quickly and there were a lot of rushed decisions made and stuff like that, and, and we'll get into that a little more later, but, um, here in this area, it's, it's kind of hard to see even in full screen, but, uh, I believe he shows a little bit more of a zoomed in approach, um. Most of it's purple, so ten to fourteen inches, and you do have some specs in there from fifteen to nineteen, but they're small portions in a big pond. You know, just, just take that the average area, ten to fifteen inches. Okay, moving on.
So a picture of, of the, the impacts on the eastern coast, uh, right here on the state of Florida.
Uh, the other thing that I wanna, I wanna point out too, which is, uh, something that is, is not lost on me, but at the same time is very significant. Okay, this date right here is eight-five of twenty-twenty-four at six in the morning. Okay, they are using military time, this is at six in the morning, you've got eighteen-hundred, so it looks like these are spaced out about twelve hours. Um, all the way from eight-three to eight-six, you know, there's a lot of data in here, but the thing that you need to pay attention to is between eight-four and eight-five. Most year rainfall was from eight-four to eight-five with this very large peak, um, at roughly about nine inches. And the green line should be the stage which preceded the rainfall, as, I mean, essentially what this graph is saying is that as the, the rainfall accumulation spiked, there was also a spike in the stage and the rainfall intervals of, you know, how tightly stacked these were together also intensified the previous day. Now, they show a couple spikes in here, like a point three and a half, like a point five this one, this one's like a point, one point, you know, two, um. These were during the day. We did get some rain that morning and kind of mid-morning. But, for the most part, the rain was done. So I, I just want to make sure that that is known, and I do not believe that that was taken into account, we'll talk about that later.
Uh, the hurricane, uh, traveled along the western side of the peninsula, and, um, as with many hurricanes, it brings lots of rainfall, and, and in some cases, we were actually on the worst side because, uh, as the hurricane travels in, in the Gulf, it maintains its energy, it's getting a lot of, uh, of its warmth, uh, warm water, and so it's, it's gaining energy and maintaining that energy. And then we're on the east side of the hurricane track, and that's where, the wet side, that's where, uh, all the rainfall, because it's, it's rotating counterclockwise, that's all hurricanes. And so we're getting all the rainfall that's coming off of the Gulf, and, um, for this particular hurricane, I, I highlighted our basin, uh, the Manatee River. Uh, it was all in purple, in purple on this map, it's, it's a NOAA map, uh, was ten to fifteen inches, and in fact, that's, that's about what was observed at, at the rain gauges. Uh, also on the, uh, graphic here.
Okay, see what I, really quick, what I said earlier was correct, he said estimate about ten to fifteen inches, and that was most of what the, uh, stations in the area caught.
Um. Is.
Also, if you look back at my, my, my previous videos, that was also what I've been saying for months, was about somewhere between fifteen inches as an average for, uh, the Gamble Creek North County area was a really good estimation without having all the fancy gauges and stuff that they have, so if I can figure it out, you can figure it out.
Is the, the actual instantaneous rain as well as accumulative rain, uh, as well as the, uh, a, a, just a random stage recorder. Uh, this is the, the Mill Creek, uh, on Mill Run. Um, and you can, and you can see how the, the water staged, and the timing of, of that, uh, the rising limb of, of the hydrograph uh, was very coincidental with, with the rainfall, and I'll get more into that later. Uh, as I mentioned, hurricanes bring a lot of wind, and with wind, you also have storm surge. Uh, the sheer stress of.
Okay, just, uh, another quick note here, again, very nice labeled graphs, they show a lot of information, they're, you know, they're very consistent, all that sort of stuff. Um, an important note that we need to pay attention to, his cutoff for Gamble Creek was Mulholland Road. Okay, past Mulholland Road, he said there was no significance, uh, according to what a reasonable person can infer from everything that was going on.
Of, of the wind on top of the water surface transfers a lot of that energy to the water, and it pushes the water up landward, uh, you know, causing surge.
Uh, also, really quick too, just to explain it kindergarten Barney style, just so everybody understands, um, this blue line here is the predictions, uh, according to their, you know, tests and, and theories and everything that they ran, this is kind of the prediction that they predicted for the storm from eight-three to eight-seven. Now, the verified is the green, this is what actually happened, and that's what we care about, we don't necessarily care about what um, was predicted, or, I mean, it does play a, a role into it, but it's not as important as the facts of what happened.
Surge, which we've, like I said, if you're watching the Weather Channel, you, you've, you've heard all these terms before. Uh, so here's, here's a, uh, a plot of the surge, it's basically the tides at Port Manatee, that's the nearest NOAA station. And you can see clearly the green line is the, uh, uh, the observed, uh, tides, and the blue line is predictive. So, so, so you can see clearly that, that departure is all, uh, coincident with the surge, uh, based from, from Debbie. Uh, on Gamble Creek however, you, you can see the, um, the gauge actually had a depression in the hydrograph. And depending on the orientation of your water body, you know, you've, you've seen it on the news, like Tampa Bay, you'll actually see the hurricane can pull a lot of the water out. Uh, and in fact, based on the rotation, that's, that's what happened on the Manatee River, so.
Okay, so what he said there tracks with both of these graphs, he is correct. You see, uh, here, on eight-four, you had a very big tide elevation right here. Um, not only did it peak right here on eight-four at eight in the morning, but then, you know, you got, you had your low tide at sixteen-hundred, this right here, eight-five, midnight of eight-five. Um, this is when we really started to notice that the water was coming up on our property, so to break this down, as far as for Gamble Creek, and what we experienced, to make this make sense, when we had this large up and then this little bit of down, and it sucked all that water out, you know, uh, granite, it, it was about mm, foot somewhere in there, you know, that the, that the, the surge came down, or the tide came down, it was enough to allow water to flow. Okay, uh, but it was still enough that it, it was also creating what they call a, uh, tailwater effect, so I'll explain that more later, but essentially, you know, right here, it, there, there was some flow, it was, it was kind of allowed to flow, but it was still holding back a pretty significant amount of water. And then as you can see, it just climbs and climbs and climbs all through eight-five, uh, before it dips again. Now, most of the Gamble Creek watershed was flooded for four days. Keep that in mind. Uh, and, you know, that also presents here with the watershed, you know, this, this is, this is verifying what I just said, just so that way we can track it, okay, see, I said, um, on eight-four, you had a very large depression, so the stage actually went negative on eight-four. But then as this, you know, as this spiked over here, as, as we seen this spike and everything, you see, it, it went down and then it peaked up, which would be right around in here, and then you had this big peak on eight-five, because this Mul- Mulholland, or, uh, Gamble Creek here did not peak until very late, very late, I think it was around eleven o'clock, ten or eleven o'clock by the time that everything peaked out for Gamble Creek. And that would, you know, essentially be, um, right around somewhere in here, in this graph, and then you see it starts to somewhat slip off back to normal according to where he pulled his data from, uh, for Gamble Creek, and, and according to this graph, you know, it, it does show that it goes back down to about base, so, that does track, but, you know, these two things um, is also significantly impacted because round, um, this point in time, right here, when you've had the highest tide, because keep in mind as well, this is king tide. That is super important. Um, right here, you know, at, at this point in time, this is king tide, this is the highest of high tides. And that was when, about this time, they decided to let out the dam. And so you see from the time that they let out this eighteen billion gallons of water, um, you know, the morning of eight-five, we've already started to see the effects of, of the sheet flow of the rainwater, and then it rocketed up, causing more flooding in the area.
Early, you can see the surge is actually, uh, a negative surge, uh, but then later, uh, it, it goes into a positive where, where wind is blowing on, on shore. Uh, the Manatee Basin, so here's, here's the, uh, map of the, of the basin, uh, this is from the, uh, the district and, uh, the many sub-basins that have been delineated, part of their watershed management plan. Uh, so they divide the basin into, into sub-basins just to, to help with analysis. Uh, so many of these basins have, uh, what's called watershed management plan models, uh, their ICPR, it's now called Stormwise. Uh, but they develop these models to help design and look at the level of service and look at uh, potential improvements that can be made on the, in the watershed. Uh, we collected, uh, those models and, and use those models later in the, in the presentation, I'll show you some of those results.
The other thing I want to point out really quick, um, because it, it is sort of significant. So the term, or the acronym that he just used, which he also said was called Waterwise, um, from my experience, unless you have experience with that particular system, you're not gonna know what that is, so you need to, you know, kind of explain that to the average person, or, I mean, unless you look it up, you have experience with it, you're really not gonna know what that means.
So, I, I talked about this in, in kind of general terms, but here's a few graphics, uh, I, I, what I saw is, is three potential processes to evaluate flooding. Uh, obviously, we discuss storm surge, uh, that's where the onshore winds can, can push the water up on the land. Uh, rainfall runoff, we're, we're in a storm, there's lots of hurricane, uh, the hurricane brings in.
Um. Sorry, I'm really trying not to cut them off, but I want to kind of explain some of this stuff as well, because this stuff on the screen that you see here is super important. You know, the, I mean, this one's pretty self-exent- explanatory, you know, this is the, like, the middle of the sea level, you know, whether it oscillates above or below, that's your high and your low tide. You know, shows, okay, this is normal high tide, but when you have a hurricane, it's, it's pushing on the surface of the water, it's welling that water up, and you get this, and then that's what flows it on land. So that's a really good diagram, um, this is like an actual picture of the, the, uh, dam letting out water, you see the gate here, one and three is open, but two is actually closed. Um, you know, you see all your water coming over from the emergency spillway. You know, this was a lot of water, guys, this was so much water that they released out, and to think that he didn't factor all of this in to his analysis is, is honestly just mind-blowing, he said later on, we'll talk about it, but he said later on, that, um, he was able to gain the same results with just sheet flow, and my question to that is, is, well, then why wasn't it worse? You know, if you're, if you, if you're saying that most of this is, is, um, right here, you know, exacerbated with shallow water table and urbanization, and that, that's really what he seems to focus on in here, is what's, it's all the overdevelopment, which is something we have said it was, but, um, you know, if you didn't factor the dam into it, you said the dam essentially had no effect, and, uh, this was controlled release and da-da-da-da, which it wasn't, we'll get into that, but, um, why wasn't it worse? And, uh, to explain this one real quick, so this is just basically how, uh, an, uh, you know, a particular natural system works, kind of like the water cycle, but with some added steps. So, um, you have E and F, so E essentially is your rainfall, F is, you know, what's soaked up, um, by the branches and the tree limbs and, and all that, you know, the leaves and stuff. J, right here, it's kind of hard to see, that, that's more or less what falls off the tree, that's more of a, a slower, you know, little bit of rain. Uh, you've got H, which is percolations going through the sand, filtering and into the water table, which is here. Uh, you have evaporation from the trees, which is G, which is not really part of this example. And then, um, H here, or, uh, this might be I. I'm not exactly sure, it's a little hard to read, but anyway, this area right here, this is what we, we, we would consider, uh, storm runoff or, uh, sheet flow. So, sheet flow, you know, is the amount of water that builds up on the surface, and as we know, water goes downhill, so it starts up here, and then it picks up speed and goes all the way down here, and then it, it collects. And then from that, and then from the water coming out from the top. And then it, it collects. And then from that, and then from the water coming out from the tide and coming in. And, uh, from the storm surge and everything, then we also get the D, uh, arrow aspect here. Which is the rise of water.
Lots of moisture, lots of rainfall, uh, and, and that's obviously a reason for, for flooding. Uh, but we also had a third, uh, reason in this watershed. There is a reservoir, Lake Manatee. Uh, it did have a release. Um, it was a designed release. It, it wasn't a damn failure by any means. So it was just a controlled release, part of its normal design, uh, how it was, it was designed during construction.
Okay. I said we'd get to it. I didn't know it was this quick. My apologies. So right here, you just heard him. He talked about the reservoir release, not a damn failure. A release is designed, controlled lowering of the water level. First problem with that, we talk about it over here. Okay? These gates are all supposed to be operational for wet season. There's a lot to get into there. Barney level understanding. It was down for maintenance. Um. And it was inoperational. I actually, you know, through some of my contacts, actually found out that it was blocked off. According to what I was told, so even if they did get a crane in here, they couldn't lift it up, all sorts of other stuff. Um. That, that's, I'm going to get into something else later on, but the other thing is, um. I would like to hear the internal communications over radio. Because from what I was told and what we found out, um, the earthen plugs. We're actually going to go back to, uh, to Google Maps. Hi, guys. Uh, we're going to go back to Google Maps here. Because this is honestly super important and I want to make sure that everybody understands what we're talking about here. Okay, so that picture was taken here where it says lovely Manatee Dam. It was taken right here. So all of this green space that you seen right here was covered in water. And the Manatee River from the dam was over its banks and was flooded outside of its banks. All through this tree line. I mean, it was, it was flooded, guys. Okay? And you still see some of the effects, uh, of them releasing the earthen plugs and all that stuff here in these pictures. These pictures are pretty recent. Ten twenty-one of twenty-four. So. Um, this is what we're talking about when we talk about these earthen plugs. And this is actually, I'm, I'm glad that they updated it after the incident. So you have a total of eight plugs. Okay? These plugs, as you can see here, okay, you see that there's this line here, all that good stuff. That is what we would call a charge. And a charge essentially, um, is in place. So that the water doesn't keep washing up against these plugs and eroding these plugs away. And then you have what you call an uncontrolled release, because you didn't trigger the release of the water. And, um, you have no way of stopping the water. You know, and it, it just has to stop itself. This is important. Okay? He calls it a controlled release. That is his professional opinion. It was a designed release, whatever you want to call it. This release was not controlled. Once they opened these plugs, once this door was open, this door was open. That was a super huge piece of the puzzle that we were talking about. This is one of the major reasons why we wanted this investigation, because we don't honestly know what these plugs do. To the watershed, to Lake Manatee, all of these things, when these things are used. These things have not been used since it was, it, since it was, uh, designed and built. Once that dirt was put in place, that was the same dirt that was sitting there well over twenty years later. Okay? Because this dam, if I'm not mistaken, is from the eighties. I could be wrong, could be older, could be from the sixties. Um, either way, that's irrelevant. This dirt is old. Okay? These plugs in the history of the Lake Manatee Dam have never been used. That's a fact. Okay? And, and the fact of this case is that these plugs have never been used before. And when they pulled these charges out of the way of these earthen gates, they didn't work. That was, that, that, that was the first problem. They didn't work. We had some failures with the dam that we needed to address. Um, which this report did not address. I mean, that was one of the major things that everybody showed up and talked about. After August fifth, the next meeting, we were all talking about the dam and the effects and, you know, we lost all our stuff and all that. This was a major factor in a lot of people's opinion, in my opinion. Secondly, the other major important thing is because those charges didn't work. We actually, um, found out that the county took an excavator in here and they actually started clawing these plugs out. They physically started to remove these plugs. Now, the way that the dam was designed to work. Is that the water rushes over these plugs. All these plugs are at different elevations, all that good stuff. And it slowly erodes them away. It's a time release. That would be considered a control release. But I want to caveat that with these, this, this whole thing here, I'm going to zoom out a little bit. Okay, this whole thing here, this whole green space here, you know, you see my cursor, this whole green space. This is an emergency spillway, guys. They changed the definition recently to call this a secondary spillway. Before all of this stuff happened, this was cur- commonly referred to as an emergency spillway. Okay? An emergency spillway isn't, is, is designed to take pressure off of the dam. It is an last ditch hail Mary effort to save the dam. When, when, in other words, when these gates here cannot effectively maintain the flow. In order to keep pressure off this dam, keep pressure off this berm. And, and not have a catastrophic failure. Um, they, they, you know, this is their last ditch effort to open enough flow and get enough water out to save the dam. With that being said, when they, when they clawed these plugs out, I'm going to zoom in kind of on them. When they clawed these plugs out, A, that accelerated the clock. B, okay, the thing that you have to understand, the elevation of Lake Manatee. At its peak was forty-two point four. Okay? The base elevation to, uh, what is underneath all of this dirt and stuff here. You see, it's kind of like concrete in the, in the areas that scraped away. That is thirty-eight feet. Okay? So let's count here. We're going to count on our hands. Thirty-eight to thirty-nine, thirty-nine to forty. Forty-nine or, um, thirty-eight, huh, 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 thirty-eight to thirty-nine, thirty-nine to forty, forty to forty-one. And forty-one to forty-two. So you have a four-foot difference of water. It may not sound like a lot, but four foot in this big of an area, that is a metric ton of water. Not literally, but I'm, I'm saying like, it's a lot of water, guys. So for, for the release to stop. In other words, they cannot control it. It, once this door is open, this is uncontrolled. They have no power over trying to control this flow until the lake elevation is at thirty-eight feet. That in, in my personal and professional opinion is very significant. And that's why you seen after the fact. So many people were complaining, you know, that we're still flooded for days because we couldn't get into our property. Uh, except for by canoe for well on five days after Monday. So Friday, for example. And we seen for days on days that they had to keep opening these gates and keep these gates open. To keep the water from uncontrollably spilling out of these three plugs. Because there was no replacing them at the time. You had to get engineers, you had to this and that. This was a very significant event. You know, and that's why I'm spending all this time explaining this, because this was something that was unprecedented for this area. And to think that this was not incorporated into this study, it is just mind blowing. Okay? So they had to keep letting out water, uh, for it not to come out of those three plugs. Um, and that, and you know, that's why you seen they kept the, the level at thirty-six feet and all that stuff until they could get those plugs back in there. And it was several weeks after this that those plugs were eroded and they were gone. And they had to keep the, uh, the drinking water supply at thirty-six feet. Back to the presentation, but sorry, that, I mean, that is, it's, it's a really complex issue. It's hard to explain, but it is very important. The, again, it was something that we wanted this firm to look into and we wanted the answer to these questions. We still don't know the answers to the questions we were asking.
To release water, when the water level gets too high in the reservoir, they've got to let some of it go, actually to prevent a dam failure. So, uh, as part of that typical design, uh, water was released of the dam. And I'll look at analysis to see, you know, what's the significance of that release on, uh, the rising waters. Uh, but I also did want to point out, uh, you're in a watershed that has. If you've lived here for any amount of time, you can definitely see, uh, the amount of urbanization that has.
Now granted, you know, obviously in the chambers and even if you're watching, you know, uh, on your laptop. This, this map right here is really hard to see. We're going to break it down really quick, fast and simple, nineteen ninety-eight. Uh, in this area specifically, which, uh, I believe would be Lakewood Ranch, for, for most of us right in here. Not a lot of development. You see a lot of green space, a lot of that. Okay, over here, everywhere you see all these brown dirt blobs and all this stuff right here, even over in here, I mean, a lot of this was developed before. But there's definitely more density of growth here.
Occurred, uh, within the basin. Much like, uh, you know, most of Florida. Uh, there's been, uh, a lot of, uh, growth and with that growth and people moving into the state. Uh, they've got to build houses and they have to live somewhere. So, uh, this, this basin, uh, like I said, much like the rest of Florida. Has experienced a lot of, uh, growth, a lot of development. Along with that development comes imperviousness. And an impervious area can, uh, impact flooding. Because you're, you're preventing percolation, you're preventing, uh, the water entering in the water table and going into storage. It has to go as runoff. Now, as engineers and really following the, the law, um, stormwater ponds are constructed. To offset, uh, and mitigate that extra imperviousness. And so the stormwater ponds are designed, but they also can be overwhelmed. Uh, stormwater ponds, uh, are designed typically to the twenty-five year event. That means that event happens once every twenty-five and, uh, I'll do.
This is something else that I want to jump into really quick. He brought it up. Stormwater ponds are designed to a standard. We've heard this time and time again, having these conversations with the board, all that stuff. The misconception is, is, well, you just heard it. This will happen once in twenty-five years, once in a hundred years, once in five hundred years. No, no. That's not what that means. That means that somebody took the time to calculate that this particular event has a. One point zero zero or point one zero zero or point zero one, whatever the number is, percent chance of happening. Within a hundred years or within a year or within twenty-five years, whatever the case is. You can have multiple events in a year. That be hundred year, twenty-five, fifty, five hundred, it doesn't matter. You can have them. Multiple in a year, multiple years in a row. There, there is no science to it. It is the will of nature. Don't let them think that they can predict storms. That, that, that is inaccurate and that gives people a misconception. I wish people would stop doing that. The other thing too, is that a lot of the stormwater ponds were overwhelmed. He is correct in saying that. Uh, we've seen a lot of failures. We've seen a lot of systems fail. There's a lot of things notated on my channel. Check all that stuff out, but he is correct.
Do some analysis here later, but what we experienced with the hurricane was pretty close, if not exceeding a hundred year event. So the design conditions of the stormwater ponds were exceeded.
The other thing I want to say is he was very conservative on this, uh, this deal. I will say that.
And therefore, uh, a lot of, uh, the additional imperviousness, you know, added to the, to potential flooding. Uh, data collection stations, so we, we looked at observed data. The county has, uh, many, uh, stage recorders, which was very helpful. Uh, along many of these systems on the Braden River, uh, Mill Creek, Gamble. So, uh, that was all very helpful. Uh, not only did we use the county data, but we also used USGS. Uh, the district collects data on these rivers, uh, as well as some of the NOAA data that I, I had already shown you. So looking at the stage data, this, we're recording the water level as it rises and falls. It's a hydrograph. Um, there was a reservoir release and so highlighted here in the red, shown, shown on the, on the red line. Is an estimate of that hydro, the, the, the release.
Okay. Um, I want to get into this graph because this graph is super important, but he makes some inaccuracies. I feel like, um, that we need to go over. So the, the thing of the matter is. Okay, they were releasing from the primary spillway according to reports. Um, at least twenty-four, defin- they're saying definitely thirty-six hours before the event. Um, lowering the level. That allowed a lot of water to be flowed out of the dam. And to fill up other areas, thus taking away their storage capacity. That's the first thing. So, uh, we'll see that in that backwater effect that I was saying where, you know, they're gonna, they're, the water's going to push back and fill up areas. Meanwhile, you know, you, you also had a big rain event on eight, four. That's where this graph starts. Uh, this is the gauge height in feet. And then, uh, this is the other thing that we need to pay attention. This is how much discharge. And, uh, CFS, which is cubic feet a second, that's a pretty complex, um. Way that, you know, it shows how many literally cubic feet of water have been discharged, all that good stuff. Um, in other words, you know, that, that's the equation to see how much water flowed out from a particular. Device or whatever the case is through a particular area. Um, this is, this seems almost like it was definitely pulled from the USGS because of this very nice graph. Um, but you see here, the blue lines, Mill Creek and Mill Run. Uh, coming into eight, four, which is when we had the water event. Uh, they're saying it peaked at eleven in the morning, twenty-three point seventy-three, eight, five. Well, it just so happens that when this graph peaked here. Um, they had already started a major release from the dam. In fact, the major release from the dam, including the auxiliary spillway that they say, uh, peaked here. They're, they're saying it didn't start late. I mean, late in the afternoon. Here, okay? Uh, or, uh, excuse me, late in the morning, actually, this would be, um, because this would be about midday. Yeah. So they're saying late in the morning. Uh, I disagree with that. Um, the reports have been as early as nine in the morning. Uh, I believe the official, somewhat official was like ten thirty. So fourteen hundred for peak and then a plateaued peak at that for a day and a. Well, not even, it's like half a day, a little over half a day. I, I don't agree with that. Um, I, it definitely was not flowing out of the auxiliary spillway. Uh, all the way into eight, eight. I, I, I can tell you that. Um, they, you know, had them gates pretty much wide open for a long period, trying to get that down below thirty-six feet. So, uh, that's the red line there that we're, we're paying attention to. But a- anyway, you know, it's directly related to. Okay, they released a bunch of water over here in the graph that you're not paying attention to because you're not looking at that. And then, you know, you're saying, oh, well, the Mill Creek crested at twenty-three point seventy-three feet. Before the auxiliary spillway was even open. Yeah, I wonder why, guys. But, uh, notice that after they opened the dam about roughly here. So, you know, pretty significant little shift. Um, look how the Braden River responded, that green line. It peaked at nineteen point six two. Um, look how the Braden River responded, that green line. It peaked at nineteen point six-two. Boom, shot up there. Manatee River at Rye, boom, shot up there. They're saying it peaked at, uh, twenty-one fifty hours, twenty point one-two feet on eight-five. Which is, is correct. Okay, remember I said earlier? That, that about at eleven o'clock is when everything peaked. That's when that, that tide came way up there and everything peaked, everything swelled. And we had the worst flooding that we'd ever seen and everybody thought they lost their houses.
It's a discharge and, and, um, it's measured in cubic feet per second. Uh, and that, and that estimates, you know, the, the discharge from the reservoir into the, into the river.
Also, the, the funniest thing is, is he's only, I, I just noticed this. He's only incorporated the auxiliary. See, this is where they changed it. The auxiliary spillway. He is not incorporating the primary spillway CFS into this model. That is the other thing. So, he's missing a whole chunk of data. You understand? Like, literally a whole chunk of data. He's missing it. And I, I don't understand how you can say, well, only three thousand, thirty-five hundred CFS up here at peak came out. What about the other six thousand supposed CFS that came out of the, the gates? Not the earthen plugs, the actual gates. Doesn't make any sense.
Um, the other lines show the stages, uh, in, in the rivers. Uh, I have a few shown here. You, you really can't, uh, read them. Um, but, uh, you can see by the timing of some of these hydrographs. That in some cases, uh, the, the, you can see on the, the blue hydrograph, it actually preceded discharge, uh, completely. Of, of, of the reservoir. So, that hydrograph, you know, rose to that level. You know, before any water was, was discharged from the reservoir. So, that's, in, in my mind, that's, that's, uh, evaluating, you know, the, the cause. Of that water.
Sorry about that. Um, see, he just said it, you know, some of these, and he's talking about this blue line here, which is Mill Creek at Mill Run. Peaked before any of the discharge happened. This is the discharge he's talking about. Which does not include the primary spillway, the way of firstly getting rid of the water.
Water rose on its own before, uh, the reservoir release. So, the, the release wasn't a significant factor. Uh, aiding in, in, in that rising limb of that hydrograph. Uh, the yellow line is stationed at Rye and you can see Rye actually, uh, peaked. Uh, slightly lagged from the peak in the discharge and that follows, you know, the physical processes, because the dam is upstream of Rye. And it takes time to travel from the station. You gotta fill storages and so on and so forth. But it takes, there's a travel time from, uh, the, the, the Lake Manatee discharge down to the Rye station. And you can see it's lagged here by a couple of hours and that makes physical sense. Uh, but the green line is, is a, a stage recorder on.
Just for reference, he's saying that at the time of peak, uh, coming out of the auxiliary spillway to the time of peak is about. Seven hours and fifteen minutes, by the way.
The Braden River. And so at the Braden River, even though it's slightly behind, uh, the discharge of Lake Manatee. There is a long travel time between Lake Manatee, you gotta travel through a very sinuous pathway, all the way down the Manatee River. And then all the way up to Braden River, uh, to, to impact the, the, uh, the green hydrograph. And you can see that, that there's not enough time, uh, to account for that physical process of travel time in, in the, in the waterway. So again, that's another weight of evidence that, that the reservoir discharge was not a, a direct cause of the rising waters. Uh, further observe stages, looking back at more of the gauges, uh, along the basin. You can see all the timing is very early, uh, and, and doesn't account for that travel time.
Okay, there's a lot of information here. He didn't really explain any of it and I wanna go over that. So, this bottom line here is Braden River at forty-fourth Street East. And according to them, it did not go above five feet on the gauge. We have this pink one, which is Port Manatee, didn't go above five feet. Uh, see here, the purple one, purple one, we're gonna estimate about six, seven feet. They don't actually give a number, so it's all estimation. That would be Ward Lake. Um, which is after the weir, um. Yeah, which is after the weir. Uh, which is interesting, because that would have to mean. That there was enough water. Either backing up to that weir and overflowing that weir to a point until, uh, Rattlesnake here, which is this blue line. This is midstream Rattlesnake Slue at Honore Avenue. Um, s- you know, it shows a pretty significant spike right here, which also comes in line, you know, this would have to travel. And meet here in order for, um, you know, the two pressures to eventually equal out. Very interesting, uh, here, you know, we have our same graph that we had before, the yellow, the green and the blue. Um, the dark blue, again, Mill Creek had that, you know, almost twenty-three. We had the primary spillway right here in the red. Uh, yellow is Manatee and then green was, uh, Braden. And we've already discussed those, so.
Here is another weight of evidence, uh, looking at some of the physical processes in, in, in the watershed. Uh, it's, it's relative impact of surge and, and, and the reservoir release. Um, so we, we used a coastal storm, storm surge model. This is a model that was developed, uh, for the DOT. Uh, evaluating storm surge for many of the rivers. It's called the Bridge Hydraulics Report, uh, for, uh, the rivers over the Manatee River.
Um. The thing that I wanna point out about this graph is it is very colorful. Um. But he doesn't explain it, is the first thing. Uh, he doesn't explain what one, two or three is. Um, we see, I mean, what I can infer is there's a lot of impacts this far deep in here. Which, uh, I would assume is this fifteen thousand number, um, in deep red. I, I would assume that, you know, that's, uh, that's probably. Somewhere in there, uh, in association with the elevation and the impacts that you would have at fifteen thousand CFS. But he doesn't, he doesn't really explain it. Um, and he, and it says, typical tides were used as a downstream boundary. Uh, you know, a- again, we had a king tide with three feet, according to his information. Of storm surge. Um, which he says that he added in here, employed a coastal storm surge model. Uh, added reservoir releases to determine the system sensitivity. Again, are you? If he's just counting the, at this five thousand number, you know, essentially the earthen plugs. Then you're not accounting for the whole flow. If you're accounting for the fifteen thousand, um. That's not really what the, the county, um, released as far as number. I believe they said a twelve-five number. You have to fact check me on that. I know I said it in older videos, um. And, and the other thing is, is they can't adequately. Really tell how much CFSs came out. There is no gauge. Um, if you get an honest county employee, they'll tell you that. But the, and then, and there's old, older emails, you can FOIA that. Um, between the, uh, the, um, director of the county and, and the board and, and all that stuff. You actually have, have had those conversations where they have no way of telling flow. Um, so that, that's, uh, another big thing.
Sorry, the bridges over the Manatee River. Um, so we.
Hold on, I'm gonna back that up for just a second. Back it up. About ten seconds.
Rivers, it's called the Bridge Hydraulics Report, uh, for, uh, the rivers over the Manatee River. Sorry, the bridges over the Manatee River. Um, so we used this model, since it was available, uh, we added the reservoir release. We simulated four different scenarios. One was a no release, uh, five thousand CFS, ten thousand CFS and fifteen thousand CFS. And, and those basically, uh, bracketed the, the range and flows that was observed. Uh, estimated as a discharge from the Lake Manatee. Uh, so we simulated a scenarios and, and looked at the results, uh, of the model. Uh, looking at the sensitivity of, of that discharge from the lake. And specifically, we were looking at the mouth of the Braden River. So here's the results and you can see the, the normal tides, uh.
Okay, so here, this is, this is where things start to get fuzzy. Um, this is gonna really affect those District Five people. He, he said right here, they were really focusing on the mouth of the Braden River, because they're trying to say that the Brad- the, the. Manatee Dam release had nothing to do with the effects of the flooding of Manatee or of, of Braden.
Had a normal, uh, you know, uh, predictive tides as a boundary condition. So, so obviously what's simulated, you can, you can see that title signature.
Okay, so just, just so we're clear, um, yellow is fifteen K, so that's what peaked way up here. Blue is the farthest one down here and that's no flow. And then you've got, you know, your orange, you've got the middle one, then you got yellow here. Um, so yellow actually shallowed out. And then peaked really high, just to kinda explain that, if you can't really see it.
Um, and overall, you can, there's actually four different scenarios, but you can barely see a difference. Uh, you gotta zoom in and the next slide, I'll, I'll, I'll show the results of those highlighted areas. One at the low tide and one at the high tide, uh, for, for that event. So zooming in, uh, uh, again on those, those, uh, those two areas, I, I have a, a smaller graphic here just as a reference. But the low tide event, you can see some differences between the four scenarios. Uh, there was about a, a nine tenths of a foot, uh, a little, you know, less than a foot.
Okay, so, um. Something else I wanna point out is they put dates here, eight-two, eight-three and then eight-three. Uh, and then this one, he does explain it, goes from eight-three to eight-four, so it is quite different. Um. And he says that it's, it's low tide about point nine of a foot, not even a foot, and then high tide's point two.
Um, differences between the four scenarios.
And that was obviously only at zero to fifteen thou- uh, fifteen thousand CFS.
So, there was some impact. But very small at low tide. Um, and at low tide, that flow is accentuated. Uh, picture if you will, the, the cross section, uh, is reduced at low tide. So the, the cross sectional area of the river is, is, is smaller. So the, uh, the sensitivity of additional flow is greater at low tide. The next graphic on the bottom there, you'll see a- at high tide. So it's the same four scenarios, the same simulation. Um, and the delta is only point two feet. So you can see at high tide, now your cross sectional area is larger. Conveyance in the river is, is much, uh, you know, the, much, the, the, the conveyance has a lot more capacity. So the impact of that additional flow from the reservoir is small. Now, extrapolate that out for a flood event like a hurricane. Uh, the cross section area would be a lot higher during the, the, the rain discharge. And, and the impacts of the, the reservoir at least will be even smaller.
Okay, so I wanna, I wanna back that up for a second. He, he just touched on this and he, he just quickly went over it. During flood stages, the impact would be even less due to the increased conveyance capacity of the river. I, I honestly would like to speak to this guy and ask how he came to that conclusion. Granted, that we're talking about hypotheticals here, because these are, you know, their hypothetical situations that they ran models on. But if we've been releasing water really consistently, you know, starting at thirty-six hours before the event. Let, let's just call it thirty-six hours, nice even number. Okay, and we're, we're, we're really getting that water out, we're dropping the level from forty feet. Down to thirty-six feet, you know, uh, uh, on, on the, the re- retention reservoir. Um, we're saturating areas, we're filling up storages, you know, we're really cranking water out there. Um. And, you know, into that event thirty-six hours before, obviously on, you know, the night of, uh, eight-four. Into the morning of eight-five, when we flooded, we had significant rainfall. So everything else was also sheet flow. You know, natural, just flowing into, um, the nooks and crevices and then making its way into these. Uh, tributaries and things. I don't feel like that was adequately addressed. I, I disagree with that part.
Packs of the, the reservoir at least will be even smaller. Uh, some of the analysis, we're getting into, into those sub-basins, those watersheds that I showed you on the, on the, uh, uh, the district's watershed management plan. Gamble Creek, it's a tributary to the Manatee River. Uh, it was, uh, a, a nice basin to ana- analyze, because it.
Uh, the other thing that I wanna get into here real quick too, is I, I actually liked that they put this map out. Um, the areas that I focused on in a lot of my videos was in this area, right here, and this area, right here. Okay, Golf Course Road, you hear me talk about that, Jim Davis, you hear me talk about that, and Rutland Road. Um, there, Gamble Creek right there, you heard me talk about Frye a little bit. Heard me talk about all the way over here at Rye, cause all this stuff interconnects, cause you see, over here, over here's Rye. You know, flowing all the way through here and then, bloop, tailwater effect, which they didn't even take that into account, because their cutoff. Was right here. That was their cutoff of their analysis. They didn't even, you know, consider that the wa- you know, all this might have flooded. And then there was a tailwater effect that pushed back. They didn't even consider that. Uh, he dismissed that pretty early on. Um, and, and mind you, they're not also taking into account all of these developments, you know, that. Um, are like plateaus, so the water's pushing off of them, you know, it's not able to. Take up that space that the filter it's taking, it's not really able to percolate into the ground, that takes time. All that stuff, you know, they're, they're not, they're not talking about all the, the, um. The communities that were being built or had been built, that they were dewatering to put in additional stages. You see that right here of the aviary, you know, you see that here on this development, which is Salt Meadows. Um, you know, they were dewatering and stuff, so were some of these other, uh, new development projects. Their pumps were running twenty-four-seven during this event. I mean, they were slamming water out. So, you know, there was no storage capacity there. As soon as it's filled up, it's pumped right back out. Um, you know, that's something else to take into account.
Has, uh, lots of observed data. Uh, we had five stations, Rutland, uh, Jim Davis, Frye. All those data, stations had observed data that we could use in this analysis. As well as compare, uh, do a comparative analysis, looking at how the model, uh, represented those same hurricane conditions. The same, uh, you know, design, uh, compared against the hundred year design that, that, that the model was developed. So looking at the observed data, here's the Gamble Creek Station, uh, or sorry, the Gamble Creek Basin and all the stations that, that, uh, have data for it. Two of the stations, uh, were very close and not only very close, uh, in, in geography, it, it's, it was, uh.
Okay. Um, he is talking about some really good points. I'll back it up and let him finish and go through all of it. Um, but I, I wanna, I wanna definitely, um. Make some observations here. So we see, starting at eight-two. That, uh, at base, you know, we had some flow. Don't know what direction, doesn't say. Um, this is kinda where I was talking about, okay, yeah, we know this is the date, but we don't really. I guess this would be fe- feet of height of the gauge, but he doesn't really talk about it. Um, and then we see that we, we go negative. Uh, so that was definite a flow out. This could have been a flow in. You know, this could have been part of that tailwater effect, but it doesn't, it doesn't show. Um, this one right here is pretty incomplete. I was, I was kinda dissatisfied with that. Um, doesn't really continue until you get over here. Um, this one's Frye, so we see, you know, that, pretty common. We had all the rain starting here. Boom, peaked up, which he talks about. And then, uh, Gamble, which is, is somewhat fed by this, but you know, it, it, uh, it also does take a little longer to respond. It, you know, it started right here. It started climbing. Um. Here, to be honest with you, for, for, for a lot of us, which is, uh. You know, when Frye started cranking too, you know, at the peak of Frye, I mean, that's pretty major flood stage for a lot of us. Twenty feet? You know, that, that's pretty major. Um, you know, so I, I think on his analysis on this, it was wrong, one hundred percent. But I, I'm gonna, like I said, I'm gonna back it up a couple of seconds here and I'm, I'm gonna let him say his whole point.
Station, uh, or sorry, the Gamble Creek Basin and all the stations that, that, uh, have data for it. Two of the stations, uh, were very close and not only very close. And not only very close, uh, in, in geography, it, it's, it was, uh, I forget what the distance between the stations. It was very small distance, and you can see the hydrographs were, were very close. So, you, you can?
Something else I'd like to point out, because it is, it is significant, um, yes, these, these stations are, are close together. Um, the blue one here, obviously Gamble Creek at Rutland, then you've got this one at Golf Course, you've got the purple one, which is at Jim Davis. And then you've got the light blue, which is at Rutland Road. The light blue, even though he doesn't have it on this graph, um, at peak, so somewhere in, right here, okay, was flowing over a million and a half gallons per minute. From, from what I can remember, I'll, I'll have to look and see if I can find all this stuff, I, I know I have it over here, um, but good guesstimation's a million and a half, okay, that's pretty, that's pretty significant. Um, and then I also wanna, wanna follow up that we have no data from Gamble Creek at Golf Course Road here. He doesn't talk about it, anything like that. Um, and it, it, you know, we don't show any data points, it actually went offline at a point in time because it was submerged with water. Um, but the calculation that it does show on USGS was over two million gallons per minute. That is a lot of water. Okay, that is a monumental amount of water, and I just wanna stress that.
And it, again, it's the same thing, the, uh, some of the watersheds, or sorry, some of the, the, uh, subbasins in, in uh, subbasins within this Gamble Creek, uh, uh, system peaked earlier than the, than the rest of the system, you can see here that the Frye Canal, uh, which is a small subbasin, uh, within the Gam- Gamble Creek system, uh, that
Uh, sorry, uh, I keep also thinking of other things too. The other thing that I, I would really like to point out is that, um, we didn't have a lot of rain, really, prior to this, um, and as you can see here, where he starts his data at Mulholland Road, for, for, for Rutland Road, for Jim Davis Road, for Frye Canal, and at Golf Course. Golf Course is always gonna retain some water. Rutland Road, pre-salt water, or Salt Meadows development, and all these other ones that are dumping into it now, it was dry, like, really dry most of the year, until you got into wet season. Jim Davis, eh, it'll always hold on to a little bit, but it chokes down real small, normal condition. The, the developments have exacerbated it extensively, super important thing.
That peaked earliest, and in fact, if you
Here, I'll back it up again.
Than the rest of the system, you can see here that the Frye Canal, uh, which is a small subbasin, uh, within the Gam- Gamble Creek system. Uh, that peaked earliest, and in fact, if you think about physics, uh, the smaller basins can react quicker. They'll respond quicker to rainfall, whereas the larger basins takes a lot longer to peak. Uh, and, and in fact, that's what we're seeing here. Uh, so the, the Frye Canal peaked a lot sooner, a lot earlier than, than the other basin, the other stations. Uh, now I'll get into the simulations, uh, uh, the storm water management plans, the, the watershed management plans that, that the district uh, uses these models, it does, it simulates the hundred year event. Now, just to put things in reference, the hundred year
Um, I wanna say this as well, that if you're not paying attention to, you know, the headings of these graphs and stuff, you're not really gonna know what this stuff is, this is where I'm talking about that the, uh, the graphs aren't really that well labeled, um, we don't really know uh, what this is, I believe this, I guess, would be hours, and then this is, um, inches. This is cumulative, so I'm assuming that this, uh, this would be hours or years, I guess, I guess this would possibly be the same thing, and then, you know, this is obviously up to sixteen inches. So, he doesn't really, I don't know, he did, he, you have to really listen to him, just as a heads up, pack it up again.
Uh, now I'll get into the simulations, uh, uh, the storm water management plans, the, the watershed management plans that, that the district uh, uses these models, it does, it simulates the hundred year event. Now, just to put things in reference, the hundred year event, that's an event that statistically speaking, comes once every hundred years. Um, and I'm gonna compare those results to the actual
Okay, again, that was a really important point, statistically speaking, it will only happen once every hundred years. Actually speaking, it can happen more than one, more than one time in a year. The other thing that I wanna point out is this part, he does not say it, but it is inferred that this is only rainfall conditions, he is not talking about the dam included in this data.
Actual Hurricane Debbie rainfall. So, uh, the top graph here, you can see, uh, where the, the orange line depicts the rainfall, the actual rainfall, uh, that had fallen, uh, as part of Hurricane Debbie. But I also showed the blue line, which is the quote-unquote hundred year design, uh, event. And that's, like I said, the models were used, uh, to simulate that design event. Now, it's a design event, just like anything else, you have to have particular boundary conditions, particular situation to simulate, uh, the response. And this is a typical hundred year design, uh, the distribution is a type-two modified distribution, and you can see it's by design, huh, no pun intended. Uh, it has a, uh, rising limb, a very slow rising limb, that fills storages, uh, that, that fills all the storages in, within the watershed, and then it has one big peak that has, uh, you simulate the flooding event. And, uh, this hundred year storm simulated a ten inch event, total depth was ten inches. But the distribution of that, and, and you can see the peak at twelve hours, it, it was about three inches fell in that one, uh, you know, thirty minute interval. So, that's, that's how, uh, you know, design, uh, models are, are developed. And they evaluate flooding and flooding impacts using that hundred year event. The Hurricane Debbie, getting back to that system, or, or that storm, uh, fell over a longer time period, so it was, it's about forty-eight hours of, of rainfall. Uh, about fourteen inches fell in that time, which was greater than the total depth of the hundred year event. Although the hundred year event only fell over twenty-four hours. Um, but here's a comparison, the, the lower graph shows a comparison of the cumulative district, uh, cumulative rainfall. And you can see the Hurricane Debbie, uh, you know, is quite a bit deeper, uh, uh, of rainfall depth. Uh, so, going through these simulations real quick, uh, you can see that the observed data uh, lines up fairly well with the Hurricane Debbie event. There is gonna be some differences, you know, models do have some error, I mean, models aren't perfect, so uh, you know, there, there might be some differences there. There's local, you know, rainfall differences, so it, there's, there's reasons why that might not be a, a perfect match. But it does, it line up fairly well with the hundred year simulation. And so in my mind, it, it actually exceeds it in some cases. So the Hurricane Debbie rainfall exceeded the hundred year design, uh, condition. Um, and you can see that in several of the graphs here at the, uh, at the various stations. Uh, again, the, the, the green and blue line, uh, the blue line is the observed. Uh, and that exceeded the, the hundred year design, and in some cases, the, the Hurricane Debbie simulation does as well. So, this result shows me that the, uh, the rainfall that was felt over the hu- the, the Hurricane Debbie, uh, event, uh, in some cases exceeded the hundred year design. Uh, looking at the, the Gamble Creek at Mulholland, uh, this was the downstream boundary condition. And we actually, in this scenario, we actually used the downstream boundary, the observed data, uh, to, to represent in the model. Uh, the purple was the simulated one hundred, so that's that design event, uh, that the district used. Uh, and you can see the district actually, uh, was predicting a lot higher storm surge than, than what was, uh, observed. Showing that the storm surge wasn't as great as, as, uh, you know, some of the design models.
Okay, again, this is not taking into account the discharge from the dam. Uh, still unclear if that was all encompassing of you know, the, the total discharge, because the, the primary spillway was not in that other graph, all that stuff. Um, the other thing that I wanna say is, I mean, four feet of storm surge for this area is massive. I mean, we seen what fo- four foot of storm surge did to Anna Maria Island, you know, I mean, it wrecked it. Um, he's playing it off as, well, that's not that bad, that's pretty bad for this area. I mean, four foot on top of all the water they were letting out and all the rain, that's bad.
Uh, the peak simulated stations, or stages. Uh, again, we're looking at the observed data, uh, and here's the actual times of, of those peaks. And you can see a bulk of, of the Gamble Creek system peaked at, oh, at three forty-five PM. Uh, Frye peaked a little earlier at, at seven fifteen AM, uh, so, uh, and, and again, showing that the smaller basin, uh, reacted faster.
And, uh, really quick, I do believe he will explain later on that, um, he was able to procure all of this simulated data, uh, without the dam discharge.
Peaked earlier. Again, all his peaks occurred from, mostly from rainfall runoff. You know, this is a kind of a common thread of all this analysis, is that the, uh, rainfall runoff is, is a dominant force. And again, comparing the, the Hurricane Debbie with the hundred year design storm, uh, Hurricane Debbie is, is a far right, uh, column, and the design storm is, is a second from the far right. Uh, and for all those stations, you can see that, that the Hurricane Debbie event, uh, exceeded the hundred year design, which was, which was used for, you know, designing the wa- the watershed. And, and all these simulations here excluded any impacts of Lake Manatee. So, these stages were achieved, these flood conditions were achieved without needing to, to modify, uh, the boundary condition, uh, at, at the Manatee River, nor did it include any uh, of, uh, the dam release, so, I
Okay, so he just said it there, the data did not include any dam releases. So none of that eighteen billion gallons of water was incorporated into this design storm. None of that stuff, um, none of that was, was, none of the tailwater effect was used, none of that stuff. But again, you're not, see, this is the thing, you're not comparing apples to apples, because in all of the simulated storms, you see a big spike up and then a quick spike down, you know, on that one graph, and you see, well, you know, it only averaged out ten inches. And while ours averaged out about fifteen, though it was over a greater period. My question is, is if you're able to achieve this roughly the same track, you know, all that stuff, because I'm assuming that this is, you know, like median numbers, this is the average of all the tests that they ran um, in the simulations. With the eighteen billion gallons of water that they released from the dam, why wasn't it worse? You know, i- if this was so bad, if Hurricane Debbie, you know, just by rainfall was so bad, why wasn't it worse if, if the dam supposedly, you know, didn't have any impact on it? That, that's what I don't understand, um, and he doesn't really explain that.
Again, here's the common thread, rainfall, local rainfall runoff caused much of this flooding. And so the, the, the Brayden River simulations, uh, again, just showing that, uh, this is a, a hydrograph on the Brayden River. Uh, the simulated Hurricane Debbie rainfall exceeded, uh, the, the hundred year storm, the design condition.
Um, the other thing too, that I wanna say is he doesn't really explain these graphs, he just say, well, they exploited the, uh, hundred year condition. And the other thing too, he doesn't explain, you know, any of this, like, what these are, what they do, uh, what they're measuring, where they're ma- they don't, you know, nothing like that, again, I understand it's a simulation, but this map is like of an actual deal here, you know, this is of something that's actually existing. Doesn't, he doesn't explain it.
Your storm, the design condition. So in conclusions, uh, you know, there was storm surge, it was observed, it wasn't that significant. And matter of fact, here's a thirty day plot, uh, you can see Hurricane Debbie, uh, it peaked at three feet. But there was another event, uh, uh, like two weeks later, that was peaking at two feet, so, you know, the
Okay, so now, this, this is the funny part to me. Okay, this is, this is the cake on top. I'm actually gonna come out of the live screen here. I'm sorry, it's a long video, guys, his presentation was long. Excuse me. This is the meat and potatoes of why I'm doing this voiceover and I'm talking to you about this, this situation. Excuse me. The conclusions that he's, he's come to, from my professional opinion, which to some people can mean nothing and to others, everything. He didn't include a lot of the data, um, in these graphs, there's missing data. Um, the storm surge for Debbie compared to the event that he's comparing it to, he said about two weeks later with only, uh, a foot higher. Um, Debbie, Debbie was three feet, I guess the next one was like two feet. Was, the next one wasn't that much rain. And the dam didn't really have to do anything. And I think that just proves that the dam had a greater impact, you know, this wasn't just storm surge, it wasn't just development. It wasn't just the dam, you know, it wasn't just one particular thing. It was, and I'm gonna quote this, it was a perfect storm, Mike Ron said that in a personal meeting that I had with him, it was a perfect storm. We had the dam, we had the overdevelopment runoff, we had, uh, the rainfall. And, you know, we, we had the perfect trifecta of everything filling up, them rushing to get all this water out thirty-six hours before from the dam, and none of that, none of it was taken into account. Which just blows my mind. The other thing is, is he wants to compare it to an event that wasn't even close to being the, the size, the impact, the rainfall, nothing like that two weeks after this event. But in two thousand three, there was a mirror event, I mean, a mirror event. As far as total rainfall, uh, which was at fifteen inches, which is what they're saying here, if you, if you go on later in this video and you listen to Tom's uh, presentation, he talks about that in the Gamble Creek area, you know, pretty much all over the county, it was an average of fifteen inches, fif- fifteen, sixteen inches. Okay, their middle gate was stuck in two thousand three. And see, this is the other thing, okay, this year, uh, last, li- last year in twenty twenty-four, they said twelve-five, I believe, CFS. Well, in the two thousand three event, they said like sixteen thousand CFS. Like sixteen thousand CFS. Because they, um, manipulated that middle gate, that middle gate, the, the mechanism broke, it slammed shut, they had to put divers in the water. And they actually had to hire a crane and pick that middle gate up in order to get flow. That was something that I brought up, that's something that I pointed out, that that was a very similar event that the, the old timers of the area were talking about, it was a spinning image and it gave them flashbacks, it was that bad. I mean, eh, you know, it was that notable to them. And, you know, everything kinda hit the notes, man, I mean, it was a very similar event, very similar rainfall. Even the, the pond, the Lake Manatee elevation was identical. You know, identical, man. And he doesn't compare apples to apples here, he compares an apple to an orange. That's wrong, that, that is not how you do these evaluations and come up with these conclusions. It is just wrong, his whole thing is wrong. And I don't, and I don't understand why the board didn't compare, ask him to compare apples to apples. That was a major event twenty years ago, and the flood That was a major event twenty years ago, and the flooding wasn't as bad. Yes, we flooded, but it was acceptable. You know, you talk about the dude at the at the, uh, right by the Boy Scouts thing, the canoe guy, he was on the news. His bathroom doors marked with every major flood event that he's experienced on that property, all the way back from the nineties, from the no name storms. Okay, and, uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna use this as an example up here, obviously more exaggerated on the door, but, you know, you've got like. Ninety nine, or like like ninety three, ninety four, then you've got like two thousand three here. And then you've got like Irma and Ian up here, and then way up there, you've got Debbie. Which was a tropical storm, it was not a hurricane, and it mirrored two thousand three. But the but the conditions were different. As far as when they released the water from the dam, how fast they they released it. The ways at which they released it, because they didn't pull no earthen plugs, they took a crane in there. And they lifted that middle gate, they didn't release those plugs for some reason, and that was an option. Back in two thousand three, they had equipment, that was an option, they could have pulled them plugs, and they could have started that process, and they didn't. And I wanna know why, that's what we wanna know, we wanna know why. This investigation that we were promised was a sham. It was a travesty to the people that lost their homes, lost their possessions, and damn near lost their lives. Trying to save their stuff, and trying to save their lives and their animals. I'm sorry, we are not comparing apples to apples here, we are comparing a fucking apple to an orange, excuse my French. It's wrong, and he's wrong on his report. In all areas, this is all the inconsistencies that I've seen with this report, just sitting here going through it with you, not the stuff that I've had time to mull over. This is all raw, real stuff, guys, and this is what matters. Okay, so, um, for some reason, the, uh, screen recording, the initial screen cor- recording cut out, so the, I'm gonna just cut the video here. Um, I talked about after this, essentially, um, the the guy that speaks later, which is, uh, from Manatee County. And the the tailwater effect, which was included in the beginning of this video, so. Um, appreciate you guys' time, thank you for tuning in, stall with News Net, uh, Parish News Network.